Who are in favor of having Ted prepare this amendment to the economic
Capital, capital improvement plan.
Capital improvement plan. All those in favor say aye. Aye. That pass. Now, do we need a motion to have her? Okay, I would like to have a motion.
You direct to the appetite of additional appropriation for $60,000 from the economic development income tax.
All right. It's your motion. Motion. And I'll second it and call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. So we've done it. Mike, now, it will come to us again next month.
Next meeting.
Oh, next meeting, yeah, not next month. It'll come to us on the sixteenth. And then on the nineteenth, it'll go before the council. And I'll plan on being here with you for that. If you need to come present it in, because they are just as informed as we are. Wouldn't hurt for you to call individually, talk to them if you want to.
I can do that.
I bet you can.
All right. Thanks everybody for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mike. I'm glad that we can be a part of this whole thing. Next up is our custodian, Keith Freeman.
Morning, young.
Good morning.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah. So, first thing I want to talk about is the gazebo. When I first got hired in back in January, it brought to my attention that the lighting for the gazebo had not been working. On going back through records, it had been since August, approximately August of 2019, when the new one was put in, not too long after that one lighting still had not been working. So, I had two different contractors come in and help me research and see where the wiring is, did my own due diligence trying to track stuff down. And what we have found, based on how conduit is running underneath the gazebo, the direction, and all the inlets into the courthouse, it leads over here to the concrete ramp side. So on the north side of the ramp, if you look in that little section right off the railing, there's that gray wire that has been there. Well, I just grabbed a hold of gray wire and it was just shoved into the ground. It was cut off and shoved in the ground. So I'm assuming that is where the end for the gazebo power supply stops. It had been told to me that when the new gazebo was put in, it was just disconnected and capped off, so that way for the reinstall and the lighting. From this point of the concrete ramp into the courthouse, there's absolutely no wiring to that gazebo. So, when they, about the same time they did the, redid the concrete ramp, we lose signal right at the concrete, right before, in the proximity of the concrete ramp. It's quite possible that it got cut in the process, which all comes down to the fact that where someone to get the lighting back into the gazebo would have to have a contractor come in, run new conduit, and everything else, because you don't know where it's going to stop off. I mean, you just try to run through the existing conduits, it's just going to hit the concrete ramp again. So, for the gazebo lighting, I'm just wanting to know if that's something I need to get estimates on. I didn't know where my responsibility is and chamber of Congress's responsibility, because they're the ones that first approached me about the gazebo and lighting and stuff. They had WP Electric come in, they checked everything from the outside up to the courthouse. They won't do any work on the inside of the courthouse. So, you know, it's where my investigation came into play, going back through Houston Electric's documentation of last services and stuff like that. If you look through the pictures, you'll see where it's cut off, the wires that are sticking out of the junction box there on the concrete, that is the old wiring for the heat pump, the original heat pump for the ramp.
Oh.
They, they never, so they pulled, so if that ever had wiring to the old gazebo, they pulled that out and left the wiring, so that just, it's, I mean, it's disconnected completely on both sides, but that has to come out as well, too. So, I guess, gentlemen, I'm just asking how to proceed with this, for getting estimates or how to approach this with the chamber.
Well, my memory says that one of the agreements was that we would provide the lighting, they'd provide the gazebo. Do you have any memory on that? Of the lighting? Of course, they didn't provide the gazebo, so we shouldn't provide the lighting. How about the courthouse exterior lighting around us? Are we in town, want to get to light that up? I mean, we're not talking about a lot of lights out there.
No, I have to check specifics or specifications or requirements to the GFI that runs out there. I don't know what they initially ran. I mean, it was a 12-2 wiring, you know, outdoor wiring that they ran to it, so as long as it is not overloaded, if none of these exterior lights are overloaded or maxed out at the breaker, and there's still room for it, that's possible, quite possible, but it'd still require a short trench to one of those to run the conduit to it and connect into it.
Have to go under the side of a trailer.
Well, unless you do...
Is there a light right over here?
Yeah, there's a light right over here, but there is still that little concrete walkway that goes around the gazebo, which is a short distance, so, you know, that's quite possible, too. If you want me to go through and get estimates on, I'll do so. I just wanted to verify the details that you're doing.
What do you think, Laura?
I think we need to get estimates. We need some ideas to get this one, too. You got it?
Yeah. Yeah. It's not a big job, is it?
No. Okay. I'm willing to do that. The last one is exterminator. We've had a reliable, based on the information that they gave me, they have been servicing the courthouse since 98, 99, and they cannot provide me with any kind of service contract that we've had ever in place. I've had my difficulties with communication with this contractor, but they finally typed me up a contract, a one-year contract, for the pest control, includes only the common areas of all three floors of the courthouse. On top of that, a $200 once a year spray on the exterior of the courthouse to, it eliminates the pheromones that ladybugs leave behind that they come back to each time. It's $200 spray, which would, you know, once they come in and do that, I have to get the window cleaner to me, or get the windows cleaned off and it's up right after. The other one, I reached out to four different contractors for this, and these are the only two that got back to me, and ARAB, I've spoken to him. I met with this gentleman in person, he's very knowledgeable, gave me one little history lesson about the ladybugs and stuff like that. The price is higher by $400 a month, or $400 a year on that, but I don't see that I'm going to have much of an issue of communication. Prime example would be with the current one in place, they had, they even put the note on the invoice for the service guy to make sure when he walked in the building to contact me first, and it never happened. The service guy is one that also takes take sprays as well, which is really weird. It's a lot of miscommunication, it's more of a headache to try to get something resolved, especially when we had issues with hands. We need something more reliable. With ARAB, they're willing to do all three floors, all offices, common areas, plus it was 200 and, it's $250 for ladybugs, to spray the courthouse for ladybugs. Cost higher, yes, but you also have to look into what kind of service move it in. It's a one-year contract, just doesn't tie it down to where if they're not any good, then we can go back and handle like this stuff.
You have room in your budget for this?
Currently, I'm already paying reliable for, yeah.
Sure, yeah, reliable, that's something I know.
Correct, which comes out to the 840 annually, plus the $200, and then...
Is there a service charge on the yard?
Yes, it's 105.
105.
But the $70 only covers the common areas, not in offices.
I'm surprised you don't cover all the offices.
I was, too. That was part of one of the things, trying to reach out to him, so that way we can set 101 and discuss what he's actually servicing. But I guess since 98, the only place that he's ever sprayed is first floor, common areas, and in the basement.
Well, I've never noticed problems, spiders and everything, and they get rid of insects problems in the other office rooms.
Well, custodians have to say thank you for not, you know, they're not saying that.
But they're here, though. So does this include one of the common areas?
Yeah, yeah, the ARAB, yeah, it's common areas and offices, and the 250 once a year.
Where are they getting one, too?
Correct, absolutely.
And the lighting, anything about ladybugs, I just want to know.
So, it's sort of...
Are there's a real ladybug, or?
So, the original, what we, growing up, is the red and black spotted ladybugs. Well, they, they brought in these new ladybugs overseas to help with tobacco products down south. Well, as the temperatures fluctuated, they migrated more north, and they leave a pheromone wherever, so wherever it's been warm, when it starts getting cold, they go back to that. So, any exterior tracks and walls and stuff like that, where the ladybugs congregated before, they go, they go back to that location. But initially, they were brought over for the tobacco leaves to help with, protect tobacco leaves down in the south. That's what they were for.
What a great idea.
Yes.
They bite, all right? They bite. Oh, yeah, terrible. When I was a kid, I used to play with ladybugs, you know, and stuff, they were just everybody's favorite little bug, and now, my gosh, don't mess with them.
So that's, just, that's the point I really didn't mention he gave me about those, what they, where they came from.
So this is a woman, calls all time. What do you think, Warren?
I don't know. I mean, we can't, we just look at your hand, so, just give your contact.
Correct. He's recommending that we go with the ARAB or ARAB, how do you pronounce it? How do they pronounce it?
It wasn't, that wasn't verified. I just said, hello, Scott. Thank you for being here.
You have nothing that you'd like to cover up?
Yeah, I'm personally paying reliable on the services each month, anyway.
All right. I have, I have...
I do have, there's an offer of insurance.
I will second that motion and call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Okay, get in contact with reliable, too.
Will do. Thank you, gentlemen.
Rick Anderson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you, how are you guys? Fine.
Pretty good.
Give me a second, I've got about an arm and a half, so...
Let me do it for you.
No, I'm good.
You sure?
Yeah, I can do it. I got my shoulder replaced about a week and a half ago. It's great, but it's, 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 it's... And we'll get the cameras all the way over, remember, right? Should I take the third one? Thank you. So, gentlemen and ladies, thank you very much. My name is Rick Anderson, I'm with Johnson Mello Solutions. We put together energy conservation programs for cities, counties, airports all over the state of Indiana. There's guarantee legislation in the state of Indiana, IC-36-1-12.5 allows you guys to go out and do your guarantee programs. And as I, as I talk to folks about, I'm not in here asking you for any additional capital, so to make this real simple, you're currently paying on energy and operational costs, let's just say a dollar. What I'm trying to do is cut your energy and operational cost down to maybe 75 cents, which leaves you an extra quarter to do some improvements to your buildings. So we're looking, the first page that I gave you there, we're looking at things like lighting, HVAC, water, jails tend to be the places where we can do a lot of, a lot of the work because that's your biggest energy hog in your county. This building's got some energy use, of course, but the jail in particular has typically a lot of use. Our big differentiator from other companies that do this similar work is solar. So we've done probably 30 to 40% of the solar in the state of Indiana. If you've flown in and out of Indianapolis, International Airport in the last seven to eight years, you've probably noticed the solar all the way around the airport. Was the largest solar field of any airport in North America. Somebody else out in California or Arizona surpassed that, unless you say it's one of the largest ones. I gave you, the second page I gave you there was Hamilton County, their justice center, we put in a large solar field. I don't know if you've driven up and down 47 up in Hamilton County, but on both sides of the road, they've got solar, they've also got it on their roof. It, it, it's just that it's a great free power source to be able to harness, if it makes sense financially. So typically, the way these things work is we come in, we get your energy bills, so I get a utility lease form signed by somebody from the county, we go and evaluate your energy costs in your particular building. So we try to aggregate all your buildings, the other courthouse, jail, county garages, any other buildings, which might have in the county. And then we do a building walkthrough to verify how you're actually utilizing utilities in your building, come back to you with a one-page, basically, that says, hey, here's, here's the amount of energy you're using in your buildings, here's why you're doing that, and then come back with a report that says, hey, we might be able to put together a program for you for X amount of dollars, and it's going to pay back. The guaranteed energy savings allows you to go out to 20 years to pay for these things back. Most folks, again, ask them for additional money, most folks go out and get a third-party lease loan type of situation. We're not a bank, so we don't tell you how to fund these things, but typically, most folks go out and get a lease loan. We just got a school system down in Indianapolis, a 2.04 loan here recently, so money is extremely cheap right now, and we've got a lot of folks that are interested in banking-wise, so just funding these projects. So, they're really, it's good to look at these things. That preliminary analysis that I told you that we do for folks, no cost of the county, so that's, that's kind of a cost of doing business, we come back to you with a report. If you say, hey, Rick, this looks great, understand that there's typically a county council that has to approve this thing, too. I like to get their approval before we deal with anything further. County council says, hey, guys, this looks really good, let's do an RFQ/RFP, which you guys have done for other things, obviously. County attorney typically likes to look at our contracts and our RFQ and RFPs to see how they look. I'm happy to get you a sample copy of those if we get to that point, but I'm doing these for folks all over the state of Indiana, and they really make a lot of sense to do, again, but they have to make sense financially. Totally get that, so.
Well, you have the potential, I mean, you're...
Okay. Sure.
So, what we, we want is to have input into that prior to construction, which is imminent.
Absolutely.
If it goes right, we're going to get it right now, so.
Oh, you are going to build, build brand new?
Brand new.
Is that the idea? Okay. Okay.
We don't know at this point if the project is a real goal or not.
Okay.
I'm wondering what the bids go back to.
Sure.
But I would not want to build that building and then you come in and say, oh, we're ready to finish.
Typically, what we did, like Fountain County, Fountain County's down south, trying to get westies, a little bit west here, southwest here, they just go a brand-new jail. That's only been, I don't know, six months, and I made a presentation to them this summer. They said, hey, can you let it, can you come back after the jail's been, you know, we can get some energy information for about six months to a year before you utilize this thing? Because a lot of folks don't design these things with solar on metal, so, you know, if I make sense...
They haven't thought about that at all. I think we have a base out there for solar panels. We're sure insurance roof panel, sure, too, so.
Typically, we prefer to put it on land, but with the roof situation, structurally, it has to make sense, and normally, with these, these one-story buildings, they're typically fine, but again, who knows? So that's one other, the roofing situation's a whole other avenue. So if you say, hey, we're not building a jail, look at putting it on my jail that's currently sitting over here, we do a structural analysis of the roof to make sure that it makes sense, but...
Somehow, we could say, because I'm thinking, someplace out west, I saw a courthouse, I can't remember where it was, a few years ago, where they actually had little wells on the courthouse lawn, you know?
Well, the integrity of these older courthouses, we haven't yet had anybody say, can you please put solar up on the Brooklyn's courthouses? It's just, from a historical perspective and anything else, we typically don't look at a courthouse, but typically, the place that really makes a lot of sense are jails, and I'm looking, I don't think a lot of county garages do sometimes, because that's a, you typically have some good flat roof space that, that makes sense.
What do you think, Laura?
Building assessment?
Yeah, I'll speak to that.
It tells us a lot. Solar, that's, it's a brand new, you can't look at it currently, not, and...
Do they have total that program in store?
Not, not now, even what, what happens, what's going to happen in the election. If you get, it gets into this, into this Green New Deal, they're going to be putting solar and wind all over the place, only when I see it. I think you're, you're kind of, like, again, what I talked about, if you're already paying these costs, typically, we can implement these systems into your, into your facilities without, without asking you for extra capital.
I guess it helps. Ted, do we need a motion? Probably you want a motion to...
But typically, you guys make a motion that says, hey, we'd like to start the utility analysis, so I'm going to do this with the auditor, I'll get it part.
Authorize the utility analysis by Johnson Mello.
Okay. That's your motion, okay. I will second it. All in favor, please say aye.
Great. Anybody have for election tomorrow? Okay, all right, well, good luck.
Well, thank you.
Good luck. It'll be, it'll be interesting.
Laura and the voters will decide.
Exactly.
Can I get your card, please?
I don't have one in here, I'm sorry.
Get one, get one.
Okay.
We've got...
Yes. No, 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 I'll, I'll be in touch, absolutely. If I may answer a question.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you guys very much.
Another commissioner's action, it says on here, coverage of all bloodwork labs.
I will go over a couple of things, though, before that. The claim that Paul had put in for that truck that was supposed to be on the agenda today, they decided not to, so, I'm not sure of that. I have a Carol Mannen application that I just got. You don't have it, so, I didn't know.
Okay, well, that's gone, we can go ahead to this. We have an application, Carol Mannen, Joan Brel, B-R-E-L. I think she's already there, isn't she?
Yeah.
Steve signed her in?
Right. It's what I was, by Steve, that he approved it, I don't know whether he signed it or not. You ready?
Have you seen it?
He's signed it.
He's actually been signed, just to get a phone call out of permission.
Steve Brel? Is it?
I think I'll get the name, I'm sorry.
Motion to accept Joan Brel at Carol Mannen. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I have one more, the health department, Joyce Yoder called up and wanted me to report. They're very busy this morning, she's done 10 new cases of COVID today, just today, and since last Sunday, the 25th, they have had 61. She would come up to report, but she has some staff off today, so, to relay that message to you.
I have a good friend from Rossville who's Steve's age, not very good at all, he's got a respirator down in Austin, right now, not, not good news. Good God.
That is it, and I will pass this, the report on the bloodwork.
Okay.
Okay. When we started doing the employee clinic in '17, all labs were covered. It's never been an issue up until about two, three weeks ago. Certain labs cost more money, depending on what they're for. So Dory has asked that we give clarification on to whether or not we want to pay Dory from Unity, sorry. If we want to pay for all labs, or if we're going to just pay for basic labs, she needs direction on how we want to proceed with that. In the three years, we've, this has only come up once, so I would tend to say that, you know, it's not very often that people are getting or needing the, you know, more expensive lab, but she just needs to know, so she knows whether she's billing it through the clinic, or she's billing it through their health insurance. As far as which labs cost more, I can't really tell you. I looked through my emails with her, and she would specify, you know, what particular labs it is that are costing more.
What, what type of bunny are we talking about here?
The one that we, the, it's $400 for the one that got brought up.
As opposed to what's a regular?
I think they're usually between 100 and 200.
200 to 400. It's going to be only a thing of that individual.
My understanding with particular individual is they're just, they're trying to, it's a process of elimination, they're trying, you know, it's not going to be, you know, standard lab that she has to have every six months, or, you know, every so often, but, still, you know, if we run it through their insurance, then it goes towards their deductible. If we do it with clinic, then it's worth all the cost.
They changed this from 2017?
No, it's not been changed, it's just never come up. There's been, it's always been just the standard labs.
Okay, so it wasn't all labs, just standard?
Yeah. And it's always... And it's always been, kind of how this happened was, if I go to my primary doctor and they order labs, I can go down to their lab and have it done, and it's ran through my insurance, or I could take the prescription over to Dutter's office, and maybe the lab is over there and it's a benefit of the clinic. She had a specialist, or he had a specialist, I think she had a specialist, that gave her the prescription, and that's, I think, kind of what made me break the record, I don't know, to be honest. I just know that I got a phone call from an employee, question, and why labs weren't paid for. And when I looked into it, Unity said that it was a standard, but normally it was standard labs, this was not a standard one.
I, uh. Going to, but my, my, we should take care of our employees, and this is not a great deal of money. You're saying you wanted, once or twice this was happened?
The first time that it's been brought to our attention.
An extra two hundred dollars for a employee. Do this. Are those labs actually done in Dutter's office? Do they send them off somewhere?
Well, they send them off to somewhere else, but any other, like if there was a lab that Dutter's office could not take the sample or do whatever, then it would not be covered ever anymore. But this is just blood work, it's a type of lab that he can draw for. Yeah, they send them all out.
So we're not looking at almost seven, ten thousand dollar lab?
No.
Is that possible?
I don't know.
Do we, do we have anybody that's on that's like me, I get that out every three weeks?
To be honest, I don't really know that, if we have anybody that gets them on a regular basis. I'm not really for sure how that is. I know certain medications require that they do, you know, so often, but I'm not sure how often.
I think that's, that one needs to be some clarification on.
I mean, I guess if you're concerned about, like you asked him about a ten thousand dollar one, I guess that what we could do is maybe set him out. You know, if he wanted to say, you're only willing to go, I don't know that there's a ten thousand dollar lab.
Well, I don't either.
But, you know, if we wanted to say, we'll cover labs that are under five hundred, five hundred or below, or four hundred or below, or about, you know, I think we could probably do that with her, and she would be okay with that. She just wants clarification, so the employee's not upset, you know, they have to pay when she, they were going to give the impression that if they went to clinic, it would be.
They had an intent, I'm sure.
Right.
In this case, okay, a lot of them may be something. Protect us from next. So, I love, I'm on the lab, but it didn't help cover.
It was two labs that bring it under. Does that cover? Is that right?
Right, but it's, if they're worried about a ten thousand dollar lab, I don't know, are there labs that actually cost ten thousand dollars, you know? I don't know, I really wouldn't. I mean, that seems like an astronomical number, but.
Twenty thousand dollars.
Right.
Well, Susan, we have a lot for, I don't know. She motioned, I think. Okay, so we're looking at a motion that says we will expect the lab to be passed through our clinic of five hundred dollars. Right? I will second that motion, and I will, whoever say aye. Motion passed, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Sheriff, do you have something to come to us?
This is missing, gentlemen.
Anyone else have anything to come to us?
Okay. We need to get this posting authorized and salary for the employer highway there. I looked at L website, the one that they have currently posted is Miami County, sixty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And Beth told me, I think the amount for.
This year, seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy.
I hear it's certainly including a whole lot, seventy-one thousand?
Nine seventy is what we say.
Seventy-one, nine, seven, two thousand, three?
Yes.
So there's a fourteen-day, it has to be posted fourteen days in Carroll County, and so I thought that, you know, go ahead and get this to LTAP, and I didn't know if you wanted to put it on Indeed. I know that their, their Indeed is the, as you see advertised, you do see a lot of Indiana local government units using Indeed also. I don't know what it costs or anything, if it costs anything at all for employer to post, but you can go online, indeed.com, and get it to Indiana, and get it to county highway engineers, and you can see what's, what's on there now, so. At any rate, we have already a job description. I did put that in this posting, they can get it from the auditor's office. And comparing it to what I saw in Miami County, Miami County jobs do use it a little more highway engineering specific than ours are a little more generic, but there's no time to change that, in my opinion, just go there and get it out there. So need your approval to post this and put a, put a number in the salary position with this point. This will satisfy both the county personnel policies, as well as provide something that can be sent to LTAP on their job posting. I don't know if you want to send it to, if Paul has an email address, or it can be, most of them, AIC, AIC, I don't know if they accept job postings or not, I'm not actually, you know, on that, so.
Used to, the magazine.
I think they usually do.
So they have posted last month. Very well, our salary's seventy-one, nine, seven.
Yes.
Just for your information, I don't know what Paul was saying, he sent us an email, I don't know if he saw it or not. He works with, what, you work, that dude is the engineering department or?
There is one, I don't know.
Well, anyway. I got to doing some research on this, counties can also employ joint, so if you get a situation where you can't find an engineer, counties can go together and hire an engineer, then you probably need to have a supervisor for, to do the local supervision on top of that. So the engineer could be the professional that does all this stuff that the engineer does now, nowadays, and so I don't know if that's, I mean, that's, to keep in the back of your mind, what would be the next step is to seek to reach out to another county and, you know, go together, share an engineer, and the, um, is it a grant in kind, or something? The support that the counties get from, when they have to hire a professional engineer.
And then we get back.
Both counties still get that subsidy, if you will, towards it, so if you have one engineer, there's two subsidies going into it, so that's another consideration.
Each county gets a full subsidy.
Each county gets a full subsidy that pulls it together, so you have, basically have an open agreement with another county to hire the engineer, and the engineer would have to, the engineer does not have to reside in the county, they are, they can do, as long as they're resident in Indiana, you could have somebody in Indianapolis, or, you know, Portland, or whatever, so, so that it keeps in line.
Okay, so if this, you said it's N-D, I-N-D-E-E-D?
Yeah, I-N-D-E-E-D.
Dot com?
Yes.
Okay, so if they charge or whatever, I think we should probably put this in our local paper also. You talked about Journal and Courier, I know they are, not that they get these papers, but they are very, very expensive. I need a limit where you have to spend.
Spend a lot?
Yeah. I don't know what to, I mean, last time we put something in, Journal and Courier, it was, I mean, because they.
It would actually go on the paper, in the paper.
Right.
It would go on the website.
So the comment, LTAP, indeed, dot com, AIC. I don't think, AIC or LTAP charges.
If I was a professional engineer looking for a new position, that I would rely on help where the Journal Courier, I mean, I think I would be looking at one of these professional magazines.
Do you want to do any comments?
I'd like to do comments, I would like to look at them.
Yeah.
And for, if I can get it in today for two weeks?
All right.
Career Builder, that's Lafayette area. That's where you posted for the county attorney position.
The USO?
Two thousand thirteen.
Okay, so does it have a rate in there?
I don't have, so careerbuilder.com.
Well, we tried to get it on there, I was just wondering how much to spend. We might have to transfer some.
I don't even know if it's still active, but.
I don't know. I think I've seen it out there. They will give it there. Did you, did you make a motion for?
For what?
To advertising.
Okay.
Sheriff, I don't know.
This is a very important thing to do, because that's what we're hard, grant line, that we get us all contingent of having some of these qualified teaching requirements to be able to do this, you agree?
Well, I don't think AIC charges, I don't think LTAP will charge, but you.
I doubt it.
But I don't know about the N-D. You know, I really don't know what comment, are you going to charge?
Yeah.
You were awake on that one.
I was waiting.
I'm just.
Well, I was just justifying our existence, you know, because not only do you get it in the comment, you get it on our website, and you get it on YouTube. And more and more people are watching the YouTube videos. I mean, a lot.
I think for most people, people, they watch that stuff to tell people, or somebody.
Just for, like, if they're two weeks, right? And what about this career builder or Indeed?
Well, we're, are we setting a date when we have to have them in by?
This says November sixteenth.
November sixth.
The next evening.
So, print?
I have to get it out today.
Yeah, has to go out today, get in the force of the weather. Hopefully this works. I do have something I want to bring up. You know, J ninety, you're mentioning this too. And the area plan wants us to change the designation from, say, ag to residential. For example, one of the recent ones that came into the complete plot, and I let them finish, just want their own to do and all this. And we approved it, and I think we're all in favor of more, more housing. My question comes over, did I go to the area plan meeting, and the plot, the plan has been completely changed? I don't say it was significantly changed. How does, somehow there's a disconnect here that's not right, you know, and now it's been, now, and I'm not arguing with Eric Lam, they're not the ones that, it's the person that's doing it, he, okay, so he shows up to the next plan meeting, he's got it different, and then the subsequent plan meeting, he's got it different again, the plan.
What the commissioners approved or disapproved is the map, not the details. So it's the zoning classification that.